This meeting is being recorded.
And you're on. Thanks, Jane.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. We've already started the meeting in open session before going into executive session, and we're now reconvening in open session. Per Governor Baker's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access this school committee meeting. Members of the public can access the meeting via Montague Community Television Broadcast. The extension of the emergency open meeting law provisions were signed into law as Chapter 20, Section 20 of the Acts of 2021. The school committee reserves the right to implement additional remote participation procedures and will notify the public of these procedures as it is practical to. The option for public bodies to hold meetings remotely until March 31st, 2025, has been signed into law by Governor Healy as Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023. Members of the public who wish to join the meeting may do so by accessing the link on the Gill-Montague Regional School District website. It can be found under "School Committee Notices and Agendas for Upcoming Meetings" under tonight's school committee. And we'd like to welcome visitors. We'll be live streaming as well as broadcasting on MCTV, and then a recording of the meeting will be available on MCTV in the district website following the meeting. If you are in the Zoom audience, please remember to keep your camera and microphone off. And as we welcome visitors, this is an opportunity for public participation. Policy BEDH has been reinstated to hold public participation remotely, and I'll just read a little reminder because we haven't done this in a while, a little more recently, but not as much as we used to. The public is welcome to make comments during this portion of the meeting. We ask that these be limited to three minutes at the most. And also, we'd just like to mention that the committee does not respond to or engage with people making any comment to us. We just listen at this time, so we welcome people to do that. And I think we have two people tonight, and I just would ask, before you speak, I think we're going to start with Lindsay, before you speak, if you could state your name and your affiliation, so it can be recorded. That'd be helpful.
Hi there. I hope you can hear me okay.
Yes.
Hi, thank you. Good evening. My name is Lindsay Wallace, and I'm the Guidance Counselor at Great Falls Middle School. I started in this role fresh out of graduate school at UMass Amherst in August 2020, after transitioning my career from supporting the business operations of Global Enterprises, EMC, now part of Dell, as well as Cox Automotive, which oversees companies like Kelley Blue Book and AutoTrader. I have learned a whole lot in my few years of working in public education and truly feel honored to be a practicing school counselor in this district. At the same time, I have felt the overwhelm of working in this system as a counselor while forging through the COVID pandemic and its after effects. There have been times where burnout has crept in.
Lindsay, you muted yourself.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian.
You muted yourself after the word "burnout."
Appreciate that. Okay, so there have been times where burnout has crept in and made me wonder if I made the right choice, moving from the private sector to public education. What has helped me through these hard times is getting to work with the students in this community, GM-RSD colleagues and leaders looking out for me, as well as recognizing moments of positive impacts and appreciation. Currently, the Great Falls Middle School and Turner's Falls High School Guidance Counseling Department is without an administrative assistant. We have interviewed amazing candidates this month, and when it came time to share the hourly rate, there has been disappointment. The job description and requirements for this position posted to SchoolSpring spanned four pages with 31 major requirements listed. The district is asking the person in this role to ensure accuracy of our students' schedules, report cards, transcripts, honor roll lists, college materials, attendance letters, as well as assist with the standardized test administration for MCAS, AP, SAT, and PSAT, as well as processing students who are coming and going, so registering and transferring, updating our websites, and much more. This is just one example of how underpaying employees in this district can put the system at risk as we are unsure when someone will be secured to fill this role. There is hope in the Unit C negotiations happening now to provide more just and competitive rates to those serving in critical, yet seriously undercompensated positions like administrative assistants, custodians, food service, and paraprofessionals. But I'm cautious with that hope, given the trajectory of Unit A contract negotiations in the past year. For students in this district to receive the public education they deserve, there is a link to staff compensation. Every young person needs and deserves a safe and clean, local pre-K through 12, public school system with well-prepared teachers, manageable class sizes, access to trained nurses and counselors, healthy meals, and an overall supportive learning environment. I feel safe saying this is what we are all constantly striving towards providing and enhancing. Echoing what fellow counselor Joseph Katz has spoken about in the last school committee meeting, paying school staff adequate wages for the critical work provided is a necessity. Please keep this in mind through the continued Unit C and Unit A contract negotiations. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lindsay. And then I think we have Joseph as well.
Thank you, Jane. Joseph Katz, School Counselor, Turner's Falls resident, and Union member. So during our last meeting, I acknowledged and praised the work you all do in your roles. Again, thank you. And I also highlight the differences I see in how educators are compensated in our districts versus greenfields. My colleagues at Great Falls Middle School and in our union, Lindsay Wallace, just spoke to you all about the impact she believes current pay rates are having on the hiring process for Unit A and Unit C employees. I'm wearing both my district counselor's hat and my Turner's Falls resident hat today as I share with you some historical data regarding annual salary increases and staff retention rates. Looking back at DESI data, I see that our district did hand out an annual raise of 3% in the 2008-2009 school year. This is the historical precedence, our union requesting 3% annual raises starting next school year. Without being in the room for any negotiations following the '08-'09 school year, I'm only assuming that the step freezes, 0% annual raises, or the 0.5 raises given out at the start in the 100-day mark of subsequent, you know what I mean, the school years that came next were agreed to in response to the very real impact of the economic recession of 2008. I believe our union was willing to sacrifice and agree to historically inadequate annual raises for the greater good of our district community. I do not believe our union thought the sacrifice would become the norm of contract agreements going forward. Again, I wasn't there, so this is just me trying to take guesses with the data. Every year since that 2008-2009 school year, our district settlement agreements have been at or below 2% annual raises, though that's over a decade of earning below the historical precedent of the 3% annual raises. Now, I was curious to see what impact this may have had on our staff retention rates. Again, from the DESI data, since that '08-'09 school year, our district has been below the statewide average for staff retention rates in 13 of the past 15 school years. As a district, year after year, we are in a position where we are looking to fill more positions than the average school district. One of our highest staff retention rates for this school year was '08-'09. Some of our lowest staff retention rates for the school years were the 2011-2012 year and the 2012-2013 school year. Those were the years following the step freezes and 0% annual raises the union agreed to in response to the economic recession. I hope you noticed I mentioned these were some of the highest and lowest retention rate years in our district. Interestingly, another high watermark of retention rates was the 2021-2022 school year. As educators, we understand that sacrifices are necessary to ensure quality school systems can function. I believe all my colleagues are and have been willing to make these sacrifices. I think this is evident in the dedication everyone in our community, school committee included, put forth in coming back to in-person learning these past couple of school years while navigating the uncertainty of COVID impacts. But I want to also go back to the other low-point staff retention year. It's the just completed 2022-23 school year, a school year that completed without a ratified contract. I believe it's not just compensation that is impacting our ability to retain or hire staff. I believe in our district, there is a perception that the sacrifices and honest, hard work educators perform will not be honored and will not be rewarded. In fact, the perception I'm hearing is that those sacrifices will be used against educators as historical precedents. I'm asking you, the school committee, as a resident and Union member, to help us rectify over a decade of below-average staff retention rates by presenting a budget with salary increases that returns to the 2008-2009 school year rate of 3%. Thank you.
Thank you, Joseph. Okay, thank you. We'll move on to important events. Brian?
So obviously, heading into the summer, there's just a few things to mention. Over the course of the summer, the Gill-Montague Elementary and Secondary Summer Programs will begin on July 5th and will continue every Monday through Thursday and through August 3rd. Friday, August 25th, will be the new teacher orientation for the start of the next school year. Monday, August 28th, will be the first day of school for staff, and Thursday, August 31st, will be the first day of school for students in grades 1 through 12. And that's it for the events that I could think of it.
Okay, thank you. Do we have Sina with us, Heather? Now that it's summer, she's probably working.
No, she's here, but she, I'm sure, love for me to report for her that she's pretty psyched at summer.
I think we can all understand that, having been there on occasion. And we'd like to thank her again for keeping us informed this year. Sina's done a wonderful job. I hope she'll be back to keep us up to date next year as well.
That's the plan. I'll pass it along.
Thank you. Superintendent's report, Brian, please.
So I just, I have two brief items. One, I'd like to take a moment to introduce our new Assistant Principal for Turner's Falls High School and Great Falls Middle School. We're very pleased to introduce Louis Daniel Martinez as the new Assistant Principal at Turner's Falls High School and Great Falls Middle School. Mr. Martinez has 10 years of experience as a building administrator. He began his administrative career as an Assistant Principal at Central High School, then served as an Assistant and Associate Principal at the High School of Science and Technology in Springfield, and since 2016, he has been the principal of Springfield STEM Middle Academy. Prior to his work as an administrator, Mr. Martinez was a middle and high school mathematics teacher in the Holyoke Public Schools, and we're excited for Louis D. Martinez to join our administrative team on July 1st, and Louis is able to join us tonight. So I wanted to just have an opportunity to introduce him to the school committee. He'll begin with us, not really on Saturday, but during the week. And I will spend some time with Chrissy Schreiber, hopefully on Thursday. So Louis, when you get off the call, I'm going to send you a text. It's Ms. Schreiber. Let me know when she's available on Thursday, okay?
Welcome. We're very happy to have you join us.
Thank you, Louis. I'll be in touch tomorrow. Okay. I did also want to provide a little bit more information about the summer food program. The summer food service program had a kickoff yesterday and began today and continues on all non-holiday weekdays, so I think the only weekday that breakfast and lunch won't be served will be on July 4th. But it goes from June 27th through August 18th. Both breakfast and lunch will be available for free to all children under 18 years old, and there's a list of locations and times for both breakfast and lunch to be picked up. The locations are Turner's Falls High School, Sheffield Elementary School, Unity Park, the Carnegie Library in downtown, and also at Irving Elementary School. And that's it for my report for this meeting.
This year, we're returning to the pre-COVID rules in the sense that meals will be eaten at that location. Am I correct, Brian?
I'm not sure. Joanne, I'm not familiar with that as part of the summer food service program this year.
I'm not positive either, but I do believe some places will be able to do the grab and go.
Okay.
You have to eat at that location.
I wasn't clear. I knew during COVID, it was permissible to pick up the food and to pick up two meals at once when we were giving it out, but I know there's some different stipulations now that the pandemic rules are done, so that would be something, yes.
Right. So we are giving out just single meals each time, no double meals. We're giving them out daily. And I know that last year, when the summer first began, people were upset because they couldn't do the grab and go, and so the state changed the rule, and they said the grab and go will be allowed. And I believe that that is in place again, but this year, but not positive.
Okay. But they will be provided at five different locations. Any person under 18 is welcome to be there and receive the food. No one has to prove residency or any other issue in order to be fed, which is really important, I think. That's great. Thank you. Okay, Business and Operations Report. That's you, Joanne.
Yes. I have a couple of transfers, three transfers actually, for you to approve. So this is covering some overages and some lines that have been overdrawn over the course of the year, and we're just trying to get them cleaned up before the end of the month, before the end of the fiscal year. So the first one, and if you can vote them here, Jane?
I think we should just do it right here. I think that makes sense.
Okay, so we are transferring $5,530 from our unemployment insurance line, and that's going to other school committee expenses. And that covers an overs created when we purchased some promotional items at the beginning of the year and also to reverse a prior transfer that happened from this line when things weren't fully uncovered.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve that transfer. Heather, thank you. And second, I heard a couple conflicting, I think Wendy will give you that one. Thank you. Any discussion? All right, we'll take a roll call vote on that. Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
And I think, Heather, we might have lost Janice again. Janice, are you there?
No, she said she was given the boot and is being asked for a password again. I emailed Tina. I didn't want to interrupt.
Okay, okay, thank you. And myself, yes, so that's passed. The next one, Joanne?
Okay, so the next one is to transfer $20,000 from instructional software to network equipment. This is basically two different technology lines, and we're just moving it from one technology line to the other. And this is so we could purchase new network servers, which are in danger of failing. So we want to get in front of that instead of letting them fail and then having to fix it in a hurry.
Right. I think Tina had explained that at some point during the year in her update for us, that that would need to happen. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to vote that transfer.
I'll move it.
That was Wendy. Thank you.
I'll second it.
And Nick seconded, and we'll take a roll call for that. Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
And myself, yes. And the third one, Joanne.
Okay, and the third one is to transfer $120,000 from our school choice tuition account to contracted services for building maintenance for Sheffield and the high school. It's split between the two, and that is due to several large unanticipated expenses. And I can give you an idea of what some of those expenses were. One second here. We had some mold remediation that had to be done at the Sheffield building. And then the air handlers on the roof in the Sheffield gym and auditorium had a problem. And then we had some problems with our coolers in the cafeteria and our boilers. And at the high school, you may all remember, our frozen pipes in our flood. It's not all covered by insurance, so we have some expenses related to that. And fixing the problem also doesn't get covered by insurance. It only fixes the damages that were created by the problem. So there are some of those expenses. We also repaired the handicap door closures at the high school, and then it's some duct cleaning and elevator issue. So all of these large expenses are what brought those lines over budget.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yep, I just wanted to let you know that we have a surplus of funds in our school choice expense line because we've had less school choice students out. So that line pays for students that leave us through school choice to go to other districts, and that number has declined this year.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to make that transfer as well.
I'll move it, Bill.
Bill, thank you.
I'll second.
Second, John. And we'll take a roll call for that as well. Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Nick?
My spacebar is not working. Yes.
Sorry. John?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
And me, yes. Thank you. Okay, Joanne, you can continue the rest of your report, please.
Okay, our fiscal '23 financials, we are closing up the books. We anticipate ending the year in the black, which is always good. The small surplus will be closed out to E and D as it happens each year. If we have a surplus, it closes to E and D, and you're not supposed to have a deficit, so pull from the E and D. As anticipated, a big piece of that savings, the surplus is coming from our school choice and our charter school enrollments being down for the outgoing, both of those numbers, and we've talked about that a few times this year when we looked at our operating statements. So as we continue to work through this month especially to close out fiscal '23, we'll have a better idea of where we are landing exactly, and we'll bring that back to you when we have a solid number. For fiscal '24, for the budget, our budget has been approved. Both the towns of Montague and the town of Gill approved the budget, and so we're able to get moving on our purchases, get payroll set up. We don't have any issues with that. The state didn't approve their budget yet, so they're a little behind, but that doesn't delay us in being able to start the process of ordering supplies over the summer. And I gave you the preliminary cherry sheets there, and so you can see the Chapter 70 number. It may be a little bit higher than we had it budgeted for if the House and the Senate can come together on that number. But even so, that number's about $60,000 higher than what we had this current year. In the prior year before that, if you remember, Chapter 70, it was only about a $30,000 increase. So that's pretty much historical, and I know, you know, I've heard about our salaries and our staffing and all of that, but we have to remember that our Chapter 70, for years and years, our increase in Chapter 70 has been about $30,000 a year. And that's been a pretty standard number since the early 2000s. So it wasn't until just a few years ago that we came out of hold harmless because our enrollment stabilized enough, and we received extra money from Chapter 70, which is about 50% of our revenues that supported our budget. So we're hopeful that as the years come, in the next few years, our enrollment will stabilize again, and we'll be able to get more Chapter 70. But until that time, we get the hold harmless amount of Chapter 70, which is usually somewhere in the $30,000 to $60,000 range each year, which is a pretty small number when we're considering inflation, all of our expenses. So this year's Chapter 70, that's the number I just wanted to point out, that it's very relatively flat from last year's Chapter 70. So not a lot of extra revenue going into fiscal '24.
Thank you. Any questions for Joanne before we finish her report? Okay, thank you, Joanne.
You're welcome.
Okay, next, we have school committee reports. And this time, we have five different warrants, and if it's acceptable, I will read the five, and we can approve them as a group. The first is fiscal year '23 Student Activity Account. Warrant number 3357 dated 6/28/2023 in the amount of $3,548.11. The next one is the same fiscal year '23. It's an accounts payable warrant, paying our bills. Number 3358, also dated 6/28/2023 in the amount of $290,369.86. The third is fiscal year '23, another accounts payable for the bills. Warrant number 3359 dated 6/28/2023 as well in the amount of $37,464.51. The fourth is an additional Student Activity Account warrant for fiscal year '23, number 3360 dated 6/28/2023 in the amount of $1,361.91. And the last is for fiscal year '24. That's an accounts payable for the bills warrant. 3400 dated 7/1/2023 in the amount of $973,283.60. I'll entertain a motion to approve those five warrants as a group.
I'll move it, Bill.
Okay, Bill, thank you.
Second, Heather.
And second, Heather, any discussion? Just an additional bit of information for anyone listening. All of that information is contained in our packet, so all the details for all of those warrants can be found there. We have a motion. We have a second. We'll take a roll call vote. Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
Thank you. Wendy?
Yes.
You and myself. Thank you all. Okay, moving on to the business portion. The first item is addressing pandemic learning loss, and I think we have Jean Powers joining us. Hi, Jean.
Hi, good evening. All right, so I wanted to present on pandemic learning loss specifically for a new program that we started this year that I've talked a little bit about with the school committee, and that is our Elementary Math Intervention Program. So I wanted to just highlight, as this was the first year of implementation, some of the things that we've done and accomplished and what we're looking forward to for next year. So last year, as you know, we put out for three full-time positions for math intervention at the elementary, and we had three of our internal candidates apply. And so from left to right, Lauren Steer from Gill, Nikki Henderson from Sheffield, and Veronica Hurst from Hill Press. So it was really great to have internal candidates step into these roles because they brought, obviously, the history of the district and also the math curriculum that we've been using. So we were awarded a grant from DESI that we had gotten the grant, actually, a couple of years ago when a number of staff had originally been trained in the Advantage Math Recovery, and we got renewed for another three years, so we're finishing the first year of this grant. And what this grant allows is for professional development for our staff. So if we think about what was offered this year, we had five teachers across the district who took advantage of taking their first level of their math recovery course. We had one teacher who had already taken the first level, and so they took the second level. We had four teachers who took what is called their fractions course, so it's very specific for supporting and understanding fractions. We had four teachers who took what is called their fractions course, so it's very specific for supporting and understanding fractions. And so based on the past three years. And this year, we now have sixty percent of our elementary teachers are trained in level one of the advantage math recovery. Which is great, so we have this, um, we're starting to build. Um, this understanding and in common practice with easy math recovery and within the classroom. We also, for our, uh, math interventionist, they took part in a rigorous course called Math Recovery Specialist Course. And this took part during the school day, but also they had a number of hours outside the school day. They had to log a hundred hours of math recovery instruction with first grade students and, um, we actually hosted the course. And we had two other districts come and spend time with our, our staff looking at the course together. So next year, they'll be taking part in the second level of this course. We have one of our math interventionists who's taking the Champions Course this summer. Um, typically this is taken after M S P, M. M R S P one and two, but you can take it in between. And she is going to be able to do in-house training for our staff. It's great, it's gonna give us a lot of flexibility in offering the A B M R courses. Um, and as you know, I've shared that we hosted a very successful math night. Host that again next year. So math intervention, um, the math interventionist did spend a number of, of their hours getting some one-on-one instruction, and I'll talk more about that in a minute. But in general. We focus on K to three instruction, um, and supporting K to three students both. Due to pandemic learning loss and the need for a foundation in math, mathematical reasoning. And so, um, the following are the percentages of students. In each grade at each school that actually took part in some sort of math intervention with their interventionist this year. Um, as you can see, our first grade is a pretty high percentage, again, that's where the math recovery. Instruction focuses, um, and for Gill, we did a K to six overall percentage. But we hope to increase the percentage of support for students next year, meaning the math interventionists. Have a little bit less time they have to spend on that course, um, but overall, it's, it's making a large impact on the district. And then math recovery specifically, that's a specific short-term one-on-one intervention, it's used to really support students who are significantly below grade level. Um, it's intense and it also, um, provides support, uh, mostly for first graders, but it depends on the student's need. So we had sixteen students this year that took part in this specific math recovery intervention. Um, so at the end of their round of math recovery, again, it's a short term, it's not a long-term intervention. Nine students met the grade level expectations, five students, um, excuse me, yeah, nine met the grade level, five students. A above grade level skills. And two students did struggle and they weren't able to make grade, grade level, but, um, the good. Thing about having this intervention was that the interventionists have lots of data to provide in the special education referral process. Um, so those students are getting additional support that they needed special education, and our math interventionists have the data to, to show what was. The needed skills and supports for these students. So looking forward, um, we are using A B M R now as. Our screener, so all teachers will have a short screener that's based on the math recovery. As well as our I ready data to help determine intervention needs for students. Um, as I said, the math interventionists are gonna take part in the second course. Which we, again, will host in district with other districts coming to us. Where they have both virtual and, um, in-person experiences. We're gonna continue to promote the free courses, we wanna get ninety-five percent of teachers, um, in the district. At the elementary and middle school level, that's offered to middle school as well, um, to be trained in A B M R by the end of our third year. And we hope to host another elementary math nights and just continue to build excitement around math at the elementary level. Uh, we had I ready challenges, monthly newsletters and many other activities. That really needs students, so I just really wanna emphasize the work that the math interventionist did this year and just, um. What they've brought to the district, we would thank them for all their work. Um, and I apologize if you've heard my dog barking in the background the whole time. I'm all done and I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Jean, I, I'd just like to say to begin with, I'm really pleased because, um, when I was an elementary teacher, there were. Avenue's for children to get extra support and extra instruction in reading. Which is of course important and valuable, but there really weren't the kind of things that I'm seeing here for. Um, students that are struggling a bit in math. And I think that's really positive because, um, as with most things, if we can help the elementary students. Get stronger skills, it just builds. And, and I appreciate that the staff is really so willing to work on, on these issues, I think that's great, thank you. John?
Yeah, and how, how long are the, uh, are these, uh, interventionists gonna be with us?
So right now, we have it built into our ESER, um, funding, and so next year is the last year of the ESER funding. Um, so we have a number of positions in that funding that as a, as administrative team, we do need to evaluate which ones we're gonna be able to manage. Um, and I know that Brian or Joanne could speak, um, in more detail to that.
And, uh, i- is the screening program, uh, which I think is a really good idea, is that gonna be available, uh, next year even? If we don't have the specialists. For our, uh, regular teachers to use?
Yeah, so we actually made, um, kits for every teacher for next year, they're actually sitting in my office and, um. So all teachers will get a quick overview of how to use them, and then it'll be something we, we measure every. Um, three times a year, and so it will become part of our regular screening process for math instruction.
Thank you.
Kind of building off the, that line of the ESER funding and deciding which tools to keep. Uh, I was curious as you were talking, how does this play into I ready? Uh, my understanding was that was a kind of an intervention tool, um, do they complement each other, are they duplicative? Um, wha- wha- just can you, can you speak to how, um, they fit together, I'm sorry, it seems like I might be lagging, so I hope this isn't terrible for everybody.
Sure, so, uh, we use I ready as another assessment, um, tool to measure three times a year. And then students are able to do practice on the I ready. Um, so teachers use that and build that into their classroom time. And one of the things that we noticed is there's definitely correlation between. A V M R screener and the I ready, but A V M R, the way in which the assessment occurs really one-on-one from student. To teacher, the teacher really sees more and understands more about the student's reasoning and math. Um, than they would necessarily see from the report in I ready, but they also, as we saw correlation from the students that were receiving math intervention. Their I ready scores were really jumping, um, so the overall processing of math is definitely, um. Something that's improved through these interventions and we can see it in both. An A V M R assessment or the I ready assessment.
Are all students getting the A V M R assessment, or is it just the ones that are, you know, flagged for concern or high interest? And they go into the one-on-one kind of assessment follow-up, so I ready, um, based on your explanation, I'm seeing I ready. For everybody supporting these math skills, A V M R more targeted for the students that might be showing signals of concern.
Yeah, so that's how we did it this year, but next year, everyone is gonna get the A V M R screener, um, so, um, that will be a way for us to then determine what type of intervention the student needs. And so our math interventionists are running some one-on-one intervention, but also a number of small group interventions. Um, and so that screener that will be done by the classroom teachers. Will then trigger, if needed, a longer or deeper A V M R assessment by the math interventionist. To really hone in on what the skills are that that student needs.
Anyone else have any questions or comments for Jean?
Jean, I just wanted to say thank you very much, um. Not only for the presentation, but also. Um, for the leadership and facilitation that you provided over the course of the year, and also a, a huge thanks to both you and Diane Ellis. For pulling together our summer program.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, our next item of business is a, we need to review the proposed school committee calendar for the next year, um. I went through the calendar and we generally meet the second and fourth Tuesday of each month. Um. When you're looking at this, I will just note that September does not follow that. The September meetings are the first and the third Tuesday of the month. There is a good gap between the end of August and the first one in September, so it isn't a week apart. The reason that I changed that was I realized when I looked at my advanced calendar, I will not be available on. Each of the second and fourth Tuesdays in September. So I've shifted the weeks and I'm hoping that will work for everyone by setting those dates now, people can get it on their calendars. Um. The only other change is in December, the nineteenth is the third week instead of the fourth, because the fourth is. Rather close to Christmas, I believe it's the day after, it's in the middle of vacation, it's the day after Christmas, which. I just felt might be a little more complicated. Um. Other than that, we have, we have been. Having a, an extra meeting in January, that's the, uh, middle one. Because that's when, um, the entire school committee goes over the preliminary fiscal year. This case twenty-five budget line items, we all meet, we have the spreadsheets and we go over each line item. So the entire committee understands all of the budget that's being proposed for the following year. Um, the. May, there's a little confusion here, the first two should have read. Um, Montague Town Meeting and Gill Town Meeting as opposed to regular meetings. We're not positive at this point when those will be held. But they're generally held early in May, and we have our regular meetings on the two dates given. And the others pretty well follow of the second and fourth schedule. Anyone have any thoughts about that while we're trying to get it set?
Are we? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Christina, did I hear someone else too?
Oh, Chris. Christina, you might wanna shut off your video while you're speaking and see if that helps with the lag.
Here we, here we go, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go. Um. Um, I, I'm not re- recalling the specific details of this budget approval process. But I'm wondering if this schedule will get ahead of the issues we had. With timeline in terms of, uh, there was information that we s- got from the state late. And then we kind of moved our schedule around and held an ad hoc meeting or like moved a schedule, a meeting forward, just curious if we can get ahead of that. If the schedule is getting ahead of that already, and Jane, I know you consider so many details, so you probably already took that into consideration. Just curious how that timeline will work out with the state timeline.
Well, part of the issues are, and I know Joanne can. Explain a lot of it better, but part of the issues with the state is. Regional school districts are required to have their budget done by certain times, and often those times are ahead of when we have the actual figures from the state. Joanne, can you fill us in more?
Yes, so last year we had a new governor, and when we have a new governor, the governor gets an extra month to create their budget. And that's what put us behind, not our schedule.
I see, thank you, so we won't have this issue next year.
We should not.
For this year, yeah, thank you.
Okay, thanks, anyone else?
Yeah, Jane, I have a question.
Wendy, sure.
Yeah, are any of these meetings, I, and I think we talked about this in previous meeting, but are we going to be doing any of these in person?
That's actually item D on our agenda tonight, is to see if there are any of these meetings that would work for people's. Work schedules, you know, their home responsibilities, if there are at least some where we could meet in person, absolutely. That's what we're, we're aiming for. Uh huh. And that's the other reason I wanted to get this out and have everybody have a chance to really look at it, so that perhaps by our next. Regular meeting, we could, um, talk about that when it might work. Um. So if that seems reasonable to people when the meetings are scheduled, we can, I'll entertain a vote to approve. The draft Gil-Montague Regional School Committee Calendar.
Oh, I'll second it, Heather, Wendy moved it.
Okay, Wendy, thank you. And Heather, any other discussion? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote then, Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
And me, yes, thank you. Um, the next item is a revised twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year calendar. We will have to vote it since it is a revision, and I think Brian will explain this for us.
Yeah, I will, because it's my fault, um, so the calendar that was approved. Back on, on March fourteenth by the committee for the next school year, for the upcoming school year, the days for both teachers and students. Um. Due to a formatting error, as I counted out, I, I left four day, two days in April that were not visible on the calendar. And therefore neither me or anybody that I asked to edit it would have noticed that. However, when payroll was beginning to set up next year, they noticed that there were in fact two days that. Needed to exist in April, and so we added those two days back to the calendar and it resulted. In the school year, um, ending, uh, where the scheduled last day of the school year being moved up by two days. And so rather than the teacher's last day being on June fourteenth. Um. It is now June twelfth. And students were, on the previous version of the calendar, was supposed to get out on June thirteenth, they will now get out on a scheduled date of June eleventh. And that's the only substantive change to the calendar.
Any questions or? Issues with that? And that was a good catch on their part, I don't, didn't notice that myself either. So, appreciate everybody. Working together on it, so we will, I will entertain a motion to vote the revised twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year. Calendar.
And also move.
Bill, I mean, John, thank you. Second. Wendy. Okay, Wendy seconded, thank you, and we'll take a roll call, Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes, but it bums me out that it starts in August.
Uh, John?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
And myself, yes, okay, thank you. The next item is what I'd, we'd like to consider is in-person and remote school committee meetings. With the new calendar in hand, if people might by our next regular meeting. If people could, um. Look at their own calendars, I know it's kind of hard to predict too far ahead, but if it looks like there's. There are any dates where we might try meeting in person. Um. Especially while the weather is good, it might be helpful. To be able to get together in, in one place. And I won't ask tonight, cause I know that's too hard to figure out at all that way. But if, if it would help to look at. An advanced calendar and see if there are any, any times that we could at least try that. Any questions or comments about that?
Yeah, I'm ready to do it anytime the committee is.
Okay, thanks. Um. Summer may be a bit trickier because of vacations and things like that, but if people can check on that. And see what, what they're thinking, that'd be great. Okay, um, the next item under business is a discussion about the open Montague School Committee seat. Um. Unfortunately, one of the, uh, write-in candidates, John Reynolds, uh, has, is not able to remain on the school committee. So we do have another open seat available. Um. If anyone knows of anyone who would like to, all they need to do is submit a letter of interest. And then we can appoint someone, we should probably pick a date, let me look at my calendar. Let's see. Again, I, I'm not sure. Again, I, I'm not sure with the summer how soon people might be able to indicate an interest. Perhaps if we picked the second letters of interest to be received by the twenty-fourth of July, perhaps. And they need to be sent to the superintendent's office, either in an email or an actual letter is fine. And if we receive any, we will make sure that the school committee members have it in advance of our meeting so that we can consider it. Any questions or discussion of that? Okay, um, we do not have any minutes to approve at this meeting. We will, I expect to have some by our next meeting. If you have any agenda requests, Bill, Brian, or I will take them. We generally meet the Tuesday a week before the next meeting. Dates of our next scheduled meetings, now that we have the new calendar, will be July twel- eleventh and July twenty-fifth. So those are the next two.
Jade, because we have the week before, we have Unit C negotiations on the Tuesday night, the fifth. I was hoping that we could set the agenda sometime on Wednesday, the sixth. It doesn't necessarily have to be in the evening.
Oh, sure. Yes.
I'll just, Bill, an email and we'll see what works.
Yeah, that sounds great. Anything that comes up, let us know. And I think we are all set. I don't think of anything else, unless anyone else can. In that case, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, Wendy, thank you. Second?
I'll second.
John? Thank you. And we'll take a roll call. Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Christina?
Before I say yes, I want to thank Lindsay and Joseph for participating today. I really appreciated their comments. Yes.
Thank you. Janice?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you all. Good night.